Members. Good evening, we're going to get started. Member Lefler Kemp, will you please call roll?
Yes, I would be glad to. Chair Harla, here. Member Johnston. Member Kirby. Member Oswald.
Here.
Member Sandston.
She's excused.
Excused. Member Welty.
Here.
Superintendent Gronseth.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Amy Storzeki. Deputy Clerk Bill Hanson. And welcome, our new Secretary Jackie Delanty. And then, student reps, we have Spencer Fredrickson from East. Thank you for coming. And the other reps are excused.
Thank you, Clerk. Will all who are able please rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move forward with the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Member Kirby.
Second.
Seconded by Member Lefler Kemp. Any discussion? Seeing no lights, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six, zero. Next, we'll move on to the reading and approving of the minutes. We will start, we only have one set of minutes that we need to read this evening, and that is for the regular school board meeting of Tuesday, June 21st, 2016. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by Member Welty.
Second.
Seconded by Member Lefler Kemp. Any discussion? Member Oswald.
Yes, I just would like to point out when we voted on the resolution to terminate certified probationary non-tenured staff, that I had made a comment of support for the teachers, the seven teachers that were listed there. And the explanation given to us was that these teachers were without a position and should be hired back. I have since found out that's not entirely the case of everyone involved, and I would like an explanation of that because I feel we voted on this resolution in error without all the facts, and we're misled.
Thank you, Member Oswald. Superintendent?
I'd ask Mr. Sworoski to come up and comment. I know that I had made a comment about them being on this list doesn't necessarily mean that they wouldn't be back, and you responded to that, I believe by saying...
Yeah, the members on that list were non-tenured. Some of the people on that list, most, the majority of them, their positions were eliminated versus by virtue of having other people who bumped into those positions. There are individuals, from time to time and year to year, that are not recommended for continuing tenure status. And yes, there were two names on that list.
Member Oswald?
I appreciate that clarification and honesty in that. And I feel badly that we weren't able to discuss that when we voted on this. I probably wouldn't have anything to do with changing the outcome, and I appreciate the correction. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes six, zero. Next, we'll move, members if you could please join me in front for school and community recognition. Good evening, members of the Board. Mr. Gronseth would like you. Good evening, members of the Board. This month, I am pleased to present the Myers Wilkins Community School Collaborative for Recognition. A warm welcome to Jen Eddy. Our Executive Director is here to accept this honor on their behalf. Studies indicate that more secure living conditions and greater access to wide range of enriching activities and experiences increase the likelihood a child will be successful in school. Developing a full-service community school is one way communities across the country are addressing the significant needs of the children living in poverty and providing these opportunities. Over the years, the successful partnership between the Myers Wilkins Community School Collaborative and the Myers Wilkins Elementary School has become a community school model for districts across Minnesota and the United States. Community schools are created through strong partnerships between community organizations and school districts. They help connect students and families with the academic, social, and health services necessary to provide more stable environment and result in improved educational outcomes. Through this important work, the Myers Wilkins Collaborative plays a vital role in helping improve educational outcomes and the overall well-being of our students and families. Recent Minnesota legislation builds on the success of our Myers Wilkins Collaborative and provides grants to expand this work throughout the state, including our own Lincoln Park Middle School here in Duluth. Many thanks to the Myers Wilkins Community School Collaborative for their leadership, their partnership, and their ongoing efforts to support this achievement of all of our students. Thank you. All right, well, good. The next piece that we have is our audience portion. And just a reminder, we, as a part, really are working on making sure that we utilize civility, and so also want to make sure that we are welcoming people for comment. And so we welcome people in while they're, I'm speaking. Before I talk about that, Member Lefler Kemp, if you could please read the Community Division and Priorities for the Duluth Schools.
We will build on our shared beliefs and values of unity, high achievement, and responsible use of resources to create Duluth Public Schools and classrooms that are safe, supportive, and inclusive. We will work to inspire every student to achieve their potential and prepare students to lead productive, fulfilling lives as citizens of Duluth and the wider world.
Thank you. All right, so we welcome forward our speakers tonight. We do have, you do have three minutes to speak after your name is called. And there's a little light here that you'll have, and it'll start blinking when it's, when you have a little bit of time left, and then it'll flash solid when you're done. So, at three minutes. And as we do have a packed agenda this evening, if you do hit three minutes, I'll have to nicely remind you that it's time to move on. All right, so first we have Lauren Martel, followed by Karen Perry.
Good evening. This is a little scrambled, so I hope I can read this okay. At the time that I compiled my report for the State Auditor's Office, a levy was being drawn out of the general fund. The total amount of money being drawn out of the fund for two different types of bonds at the time equaled exactly $7,518,527. Administration and the majority of the Board told the media there was absolutely no connection between this $7.5 million withdrawal from the fund and a huge deficit, nearly twice the size of the deficit the Board just dealt with. I don't believe the majority Board members even knew how fictitious that claim was. None of them seemed to understand the appropriated monies at all. They just kept claiming it was all covered by savings. When I conferenced with the State, a meeting that lasted an hour and a half and I have recorded, Diane Severson, the audit manager, said, "Based on the information I provided, and I could provide much more complete information today," quote, "It was very clear from the information you sent that the savings claims are an issue, that there might have been a lot of things done and presented that things are going to be a certain way that are not coming to fruition. In relation to the savings claims, those are based on estimates and assumptions. The minute one estimate or assumption changes, which clearly that has happened, the whole projection is skewed." During a July 2014 special school board meeting, Ms. Severson added on the record that red plan savings are, quote, "significantly less than projected." You have stated often on the record, Mr. Gronseth, that all the red plan savings have been booked, to use your phrase. Are you claiming, sir, that the assessment of the State Auditor's Office was inaccurate? If you do adjust your previous statements, and I think you ought to, please also tell the public how your staff is currently auditing the savings. How are you calculating and separating what's real from what isn't? I request that you address this issue during your report, and I look forward to your reply. Thank you.
Next up, we have Karen Perry. If there's anyone in the audience that was looking to speak tonight, you may sign up during her time up in the front. If not, she'll be our last speaker. Welcome, Karen.
Hi. Hello, everyone. I know most of you. I'm here to speak today on behalf of our children and our parents. I meet with a lot of parents and children, and one of the main concerns is the lack of communication. I accompany parents to meetings or what have you at schools, and it's almost like everybody there from the administration has a rap sheet on this kid. That parents usually don't have an idea of these incidents going on with their child until they've compiled to the point of some sort of huge consequence. And so I guess my ask is, what is the plan in moving forward on holding people responsible for communicating with parents effectively as per the handbook says? I read through a lot of the disciplinary things, and it pointed out that Phase One or Step One for anyone who deems a child to have done something they shouldn't have done is to contact the parent. That almost never happens. And when I go up to the schools to ask why, I get rebuttals like, "Well, I didn't want to get yelled at." Or, you know, it seems to be like compiled excuses as to why parents aren't being contacted about their children. But the SROs are being contacted. And so what happens is, is this child, who may have misbehaved for a day, now has a day in court. And so how is that effective? And how is that productive for children to learn when they're not given a chance to learn how to make healthy choices, but rather punished immediately for the poor choice they've made with no learning around that poor choice of why it was a poor choice to begin with? I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Karen. Appreciate that. Were there any, student member Fredrickson, did anyone sign up while I was listening? I didn't see if anyone did. Okay, thank you very much. All right, next we'll move on to reading communications and petitions, and then our superintendent's report.
All right, there were not any formal communications, so I'll move right into the superintendent's report, which starts at Cub Foods. The other day, when I was at Cub Foods, the manager came up and he was putting their back-to-school display up with notebooks and crayons and such, and was asking about back-to-school lists. And you might have noticed in other stores too that back-to-school supplies are starting to fill the shelves. And we have received a few calls about the school supply lists. And so I just wanted people to know that we do post those on the websites. Not all of them may be up at this time, but very soon they should be up for people to check out, so I encourage them to check them out. Some stores I know do print them out, but that's on their own, so we do share our list with them, but that's their deal. And then, coming up in August, we have our annual partnership with CHUM, where we hand out backpacks to families who need school supplies and backpacks for their students. And once again, the event will be held here in this building in historic old Central High School on August 23rd. Usually that event is held in the gym, but we're still going to be undergoing some renovations in the gym at that time, so they'll be on the first floor on this side of the building on that day. And we encourage people to check out the website and learn more about it. And if your students have need for backpacks and school supplies, by all means, come here on August 23rd. So even though we're talking about back-to-school supplies, it is only July, there's still plenty of summer left, and there are many things that families and students can do throughout the community to continue to learn and grow in a variety of activities. The public libraries, the state and city parks, many of the events throughout the community are available to help prevent that summer slide for students. And research shows that one of the best things that kids can do to keep up over the summer is read. So we encourage people to read with their kids as much as they can over the summer. Those bedtime stories go a long way in keeping students' skills sharp over the summer. So, read, read, read. I also want to have one more reminder about summer breakfast and lunch programs. They run through August 26th, so we have quite a ways to go with those. They are funded by the USDA. Meals are provided to children 18 years of age and younger without charge. And adults who accompany their children can purchase a meal for $3.80. Breakfast is available from 8:00 to 10:30. Lunch is from 11:30 to 1:00. And once again, that's at Lester Park, Lowell, Myers Wilkins, Piedmont, Laura MacArthur, Stowe, Lincoln Middle School, Denfeld High School. And brown bag lunches can be picked up at the Boys and Girls Club at Lincoln Park. And if you need that information, again, check out our website at www.isd709.org. And we have a very sharp dressed Spencer here to share some news from the schools in July.
For Duluth East, there hasn't really been much to say. Sadly, as summer comes, we see some tragedies happen, including one of my friends and an upcoming senior in a bad ATV accident and almost died. He's currently in the hospital for a few days, and he may be handicapped for the rest of his life as we keep him in our thoughts. And another tragedy, just a few days ago, is an East graduate who played hockey has also dove off a dock and broke his neck and is currently fighting for his life. So I would just like everyone to keep them in our thoughts as tragedies do happen over the summer, and it's sad. But other than that, I think that is all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that completes the superintendent's report for the month.
Thank you very much. Now we will move on to the report from standing committees. Member Lefler Kemp, if you could please begin with the Education Committee.
I will be glad to. Want to start by just also thanking the superintendent for the article he had in the Budget here last week about the community schools that we recognized today. And I know there's committees meeting all summer about the expansion of our community schools, both at Lincoln Park as well as Myers Wilkins, and also where you highlighted the lunch program. So I've talked to a lot of people who have read that, so thank you. With the Education Committee, again, we always meet the second Tuesday of the month. And so this is from our meeting on last week. And we start with informational items. Appreciated, our first item here is our Assistant Superintendent's report, monthly report. You can read over it on page four, but a couple of things she highlighted is, she just completed her year anniversary with us, so good job. And thank you for all your hard work, including your over 50 staff interviews you did as part of your learning process this year and your goal-setting for the year. Right now, one of the areas that Assistant Superintendent Amy Storzeki is working on is also preparing for the staff training that we'll be doing in August as well. And so she highlights that in her report as well. Thank you just again for all of your work getting to now our district very quickly and really working to help identify, continue to identify strengths and challenges we have here in the district. The next informational presentation we have was from Ron Lake, who is our Climate Coordinator with the Duluth Public Schools. And it was our annual bullying report, as well as he provided us with updates on the trainings and activities that are happening throughout the school district on positive behavior intervention support training. That's PBIS, you might hear that, or we've been hearing that a lot. On page five is some of the documentation. And just want to highlight a couple of things. The Duluth News Tribune did a good story following this meeting. But as you can see, there were 77 documented referrals on our infinite campus, and these were documentations that came through school administrators, principals, assistant principals. Also, the documentation includes how these referrals were resolved, and it highlighted the areas there. I think we had a long discussion with Ron Lake. He's actually been coming to our meetings quite often over the last couple of years as he worked with a community group as we established our new bullying policy. And we've had a bullying policy in the past, but new policies that came under the Safe Schools Bill, the state law, we revised them. So as a school board, we've had a number of conversations as that process was going through and with community members. And I guess the other thing that Ron pointed out is that this year, a big focus was on improving our documentation and reporting, and also continued training with our staff, our principals, and our students on bullying. And I know as a parent here in the district that we, as a district, work really hard to make sure all students are treated with respect and we work really hard to provide a safe and welcoming environment. And so we discussed kind of a lot of things under that with this report. The next area that we had information, or an informational presentation on, was Training for Success with PLCs, and that's professional learning communities. And this was, we've really been receiving a series the last three months of trainings from our Assistant Superintendent and Dr. Michael Carey, the Director of Curriculum, on the different focuses that we have and the different trainings that are going on dealing with our district-wide continuous improvement plan. And so the focus of this informational session was particularly around the professional learning communities. Our staff is going to be having a training in August. We're bringing in a national presenter who has worked with some of our staff, but by bringing this trainer here, more staff will be able to participate along with principals. And we're, so we got a lot of background information on the upcoming training our staff will be having. So it's recommended that the Duluth School Board receive that item as informational. The third area we spent time on was on grant applications. And again, these are grants that our district staff submit. And there is one from the Northland Foundation Thrive Initiative Grant that Jay Russell, who's the Director of our Community Education Early Childhood Programs, presented. And it's a grant for $5,000. And we're going to actually, it's moved to the action items. Sometimes when grants are written, they come through quicker, and so we will be voting on that. But when awarded, these funds will be used to support mental health services for participants in our early childhood family education first-year program. Then we're on to action items. And you, Board members, you can go to page eight, and that's the first resolution that we do each month. And would you like me to move forward?
Yes, please.
Okay. I move Resolution E. 716-3382, Acceptance of Grant Awards to Duluth Public Schools, Whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 Requires the School District to Accept Grants by Resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full. And whereas acceptance of the grant in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below-described grant from said organization in accordance with the terms set forth here within. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these organizations. And the first one noted is the Purbridge Center for the Arts, Center for the Arts Education, which we've received over the years. And the funds from this grant award will be used for staff development of art educators, music, media arts, visual arts, dance, and theater in Duluth, as well as in the Arrowhead region. And we serve as a regional center for the Purbridge Center for the Arts Education for all of northeastern Minnesota. And then the second grant is the Northland Foundation Thrive Initiative, which I referenced earlier, the first-year program for $5,000. I move that we accept these awards.
It's been moved by Member Lefler Kemp, seconded by Member Welty. Seeing no lights, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes six, zero. Thank you, you may continue.
And then the next area is diploma requests. Each month, we may have different students meeting graduation requirements. So the individual ones we have this month are Gina M. Atkinson and Jose Alberto Rodriguez Ramirez. And then, and it's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above diploma request. And then Section C is the 2016 graduates. And you'll find the listings of the alternative learning, ALC, Denfeld, and East of the graduates. And it's recommended by the administration for the official minutes that we include a certified list of June 26th graduates as submitted by their respective high schools, and that we approve that. And then the last item, action item, is the purchase of Advanced Placement United States History Textbooks. And this is to continue to meet the requirements of the Minnesota Standards in Social Studies that was adopted by the legislation in May 2013. The Advanced Placement American History Teachers throughout Duluth met during the months of April and May to explore options in textbooks for AP American History classes at both Denfeld and East High School. So this committee, and under the leadership of Dr. Mike Carey, is recommending that the Duluth School Board approve the expenditure of $19,766.07 to purchase 150 copies of America's history for the AP course and learning curve in Strive for Five for Americans History, 8th Edition. And it's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above items. And then future items are review of the teacher evaluation procedures, 2016-17 high school course program offerings, policy updates, and regulation updates. I move the Education... I move the education agenda.
It's been moved by Member Lefler Kemp, seconded by Member Welty. Any items for discussion, board members? Member Johnston, what item would you like to discuss?
One B, one.
One B, one. Okay. Any other questions, members? Member Welty.
Two D, one.
Two D, one? Thank you. We'll go in order, or are there any additions? Seeing no lights, we'll begin with Member Johnston. Member Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to say thank for the administration for sending out a supplemental note on the bullying reports, and that told, brief description of what they were, and that's exactly what I was asking for. And didn't want any more detail, but I think it was very informative what kind of reports we're getting, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Johnston. Seeing no further lights, we will move to two D, one. Member Welty.
This is a question that kind of hinges on my advanced age, but with regard to the placement of the, of the purchase of the history textbooks, I'm trying to recall what I think we talked about briefly with Dr. Carey, and that was just a brief mention of the possibility of buying Chromebooks, which I gathered was considered, and we went with the paper copies. Am I completely off in thinking that we talked about Chromebooks? And if that's, if I've actually remembered it correctly, I just would like to have kind of a reprise on what we said about the Chromebook possibility.
Superintendent.
Your change of face has belied your old age, by the way. We did talk about the Chromebooks, and if I'm remembering correctly, Dr. Carey was saying that the courses that had, that did get the Chromebooks for Social Studies have more of a current affairs feel to the curriculum, so it's always changing, where this has a very set curriculum, and a textbook worked more effectively than a Chromebook would for these. Also, teachers who are using Chromebooks are writing their own curriculums for this, and being Advanced Placement, those curriculums are set for us. And so a book is the better way to go.
Just trying to remember correctly if, just I have a brief question. If we can, this was left over, so there, we did a Social Studies update, was it a couple of years ago? Can you just refresh my memory for that piece? Thank you.
I believe it was last year we made purchase of new Social Studies materials. And each year, we have a set amount, $450,000, that goes towards the purchase of textbooks or other instructional materials. And sometimes we build that up to be able to make a large purchase. Last year, there wasn't quite enough funds to have all of the materials replaced, and so this is another piece that was following up after that, that past major purchase.
Thank you. Member Johnston.
Member Welty has a question about Chromebooks. Brought out of interest of one of my, another thought back a ways, but I think it maybe is worth asking, I hope. There was a comment here about a year ago about Lincoln Park not having as many Chromebooks. And also, again, we talked about that in the Education Equity Committee, that a lot of, a lot of students in Lincoln Park and middle school, all of our schools, do not have access to computers at home. And I don't know if all those are not necessarily connected, I don't recall if students get to bring home Chromebooks or not. But more important is, was that ever rectified on the Lincoln Park Chromebook issue? And I don't know if the other question about taking them home is a minor comment, but the first part for sure, what's going on there?
Just a point of order that it isn't directly related to this, but we will, we'll make sure that the question's answered, I think it's important, so. Superintendent.
Well, first off, the kids don't take the Chromebooks home, they're shared between classes. And we did purchase more Chromebooks that are at Lincoln Park. I can't, I don't see Bart here, but I don't have the number, but I know that there are a few carts that were purchased, and there were Chromebooks purchased for staff, and there's been ongoing training with staff on how to use those. And so we're working towards having more equal numbers of computers across the district.
Member Welty.
I just noticed that, that Member Fredrickson's light was blinking for a while, and I wondered if he had a question or a comment about the Chromebooks. And I'd hate to think that, to be germane, he felt perhaps he should turn off his light. I'd be curious to hear what our student representative might add to that discussion.
Student Member Fredrickson.
I just wanted to comment that the Chromebooks are actually a great idea because instead of having that teacher try to like, take a computer lab, have the whole class go to the computer lab, and then there's limited computer labs for every class, and how everything in high school is now going digital, and how we're trying to get online more, those Chromebooks help so much more with, as I have been on a Chromebook almost every day last year, because you can just easily go on them, and there's so much more to do with the Internet now in education than earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no further lights for discussion, all those in favor of the Education Committee Agenda Presentation Report? Aye. Opposed? Passes six, zero. Couldn't find the word, it was not coming. All right. Member Kirby, if you could please take it away with the Human Resources Report.
Thank you. The Human Resources Committee met on July nineteenth, for a while, I should say. We had several interesting discussions. The staffing report showed, I'll start with that, that we had, in the middle of the summer, seven certified appointments, thirty-seven certified extensions, one certified leave, one certified permanent increase, two certified resignations, two certified retirements, fifty certified summer school positions, two certified temporary decreases, two certified temporary increases, six non-certified appointments, thirty non-certified extensions, four non-certified leaves, one non-certified permanent decrease, one non-certified promotion, four non-certified resignations, three non-certified retirements, and fifty-three non-certified summer school positions, one certified temporary decrease, and one non-certified temporary increase. A lot of these positions dealt with summer school issues. Our action items included raising the hourly salary of some hourly substitutes, hourly and non-certified substitutes. Most of these, we were told, work less than twelve hours per week. The state minimum wage goes up August first to nine fifty, and so we increased those who were at nine dollars to nine fifty, and there were actually a few who were at nine fifty who went to ten dollars, although not many. There was a lot of discussion around this, and I think general support within the school board and the committee for maximizing the wages and benefits of all ISD 709 employees, but also being cognizant of the effects that these decisions have on other employees. Those close to, in salary to those whose salaries are being raised are affected. We have to be cognizant of other school districts and professions and market rates, and we have to be cognizant of the overall budget and the effect that this has on the budget and on contractual agreements that we have with certified units. This puts subsequent upward pressure on these wages and costs for the district, and I expect there will be more discussion of this in our committee. But there was a lot of discussion about this, and we all wanted to give our employees the best benefit and wage package that we could. Now, do we have to approve that? This is, this is an action item.
We'll be approved of the agenda.
Okay. Next, there was a discussion of the Policy 413 prohibiting harassment and violence. This is different than the bullying policy, which is another policy. The only change in this policy, which was adopted on April nineteenth of this year, was the date from June to July in the policy. And so that was a first reading. I think, Member Johnston asked for more detail, which we subsequently obtained. Part of the problem is some of these numbers are pretty small, and it's not feasible to identify small numbers. But thank you to the Human Relations Manager who provided that with us. So there was a summary of the harassment complaints that was provided to us as well. There was discussion around an informational item about the superintendent evaluation process, including timeline. We were provided with the current guidelines, which have been used only the past four years, and are based on Minnesota School Board Association guidelines. And some new information was forthcoming since then from MSBA. And it was read on that all of this information would be provided to the school board, and we could then digest this and review it. Current contract requires that the superintendent be notified November first if his subsequent contract is not to be offered. And so for this year, we'll be using the forms that we used last year to evaluate the superintendent. I personally have not been involved in this. I have been involved in the past in hiring superintendents, but not in evaluating them. So for the three of us new members, this will be something new. It's important, and in the Minnesota School Board Association documents, it indicates that all school board members and the superintendent need to be involved in this, not just a committee of the school board. And further discussion of this will ensue, I'm sure, in committee as well. That was the Human Resources Committee Report, and I move that it be adopted.
It's been moved by Member Kirby. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Oswald. Points of discussion, Member Welty, what item would you like to discuss?
I'd like to discuss the issue of the hourly rates for our employees.
Two A, two. Okay. Thank you. Member Johnston, what item would you like to discuss?
Two B, but real quick, as the comment I just made earlier referred to this section, not the one on the previous committee, that's all I wanted to say, apologize for the confusion.
Okay, thank you. So do you still want to discuss it, or is that?
Well, I said before, five C's.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay. All right, this just restarted. Did anyone else have their, oh, and Member Oswald?
It's in setup mode.
She's going to do three B. Something clicked, you know, I'm going to, Member Welty, if you want to put your light on, and then, all right. If you want to bring forward what you were talking about.
Yes, Dr. Kirby is absolutely right. We had a spirited and helpful discussion about salaries. I'll just note that, I guess to all intents and purposes, the consensus view at our committee meeting was to, was the offer of an expectation or the indication that we would like to have some sort of report on the financial consequences of various increases in pay for our hourly employees. And I'm just wondering if, if there has been some talk about that in administrative circles, and if there's any sort of a timeline that we might look forward to, to have that information brought back to the school board.
Mr. Sworsky, I'm going to, just due to this, can you answer Member Welty's question, and also just give a brief overview of how kind of salary schedules are usually set with this, as well as with bargaining units? So I see that Member Oswald was next, but I'm going to click lights over until we get Member, okay.
There we are. Okay. Yeah, we took a look at the wage analysis at this, and we can get this information out. There's basically three kind of categories we're looking at here. One was a substitute non-licensed classroom, these are paraprofessionals. The others are the hourly monitors who do the playgrounds, the cafeterias, those types of things. Those two together are roughly about sixteen thousand five hundred. We discovered as we're looking through this, there's another category in the middle that is probably mostly made up of maintenance and food service workers, and that one is significantly higher at thirty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-five. Now, that number in itself is large, but what I believe is the case here is there's a sixty-seven day period that they operate as a sub, and then in the case of the maintenance, then they go to a maintenance unit type wage. So I think this larger number is as if they were there all year, but in essence, I believe it's first for that sixty-seven days. But they're identified as subs, and so that's how they're pulled out, and we can't differentiate between the sixty-seven days and the ongoing.
Thank you.
And that was thirty-five thousand, so the total came to fifty-one thousand six hundred.
And then also just the brief overview for how those wage schedules are set, for, just in general, when we're going to look at an hourly wage change or wage change.
Right, yeah, I mean, in essence, if you pick ten dollars, which is probably the average of all of this right now, and that fifty cents is about five percent on top of that. So that's kind of what we were using as a model.
And then if there were other units that were to have it raised, they would go through the negotiation process?
Well, that's, that's it exactly. If you look at this, that's, that represents about a five percent raise. I know there were some conversations about if you want a dollar, that would be a ten percent raise. Now, when we look at some of the other units, the ones, I believe we picked twenty-five dollars and below an hour, you know, assuming the two percent increase for those groups, that would fall within that, that's going to be about a hundred and sixty thousand. But if you looked at a pressure for a five percent increase comparable to what the substitutes would be getting, that's about a four hundred and two thousand dollar. My guess is, you know, you'd be somewhere in the range in between those, not necessarily at the high end of the five percent. But it, when we talk about the salary compression, you're going to have a number of people at those entry-level salaries in the contract saying, you just gave all these other people five or ten percent increases, and you're giving me two.
Thank you for that explanation. Member Oswald was next.
I just wanted to note that the majority of these positions on here are substitutes and non-guaranteed work-related days. These people that fill these jobs are not guaranteed any work, and it's going to get increasingly difficult to fill these positions, not being able to guarantee them work. I just went to Wendy's the other day with my kids, and right on their sign by the mall, Wendy's is giving a hundred dollar signing bonus to work at Wendy's. So, you know, we, I think, need to become creative in offering perks and incentives of some sort that minimize our costs, but yet tell our workers that they are valued and important, and we need them. We need people to be flexible, we need people to fill these jobs, we need to have people that care about our kids within these positions. And I hope that we can discuss establishing a minimum wage at our district level that's happy and satisfying to our board while managing our costs effectively, and not necessarily be forced to make these arrangements in the future, and to increase our wages to only need a minimum, but to establish our own lowest paid wage. And hopefully, if we can find new sources of revenue and work hard as a team, we can come up with creative ways to free up money to do that, to value our employees, and create this as a, as a great place to work yet again, and instead not give them the bare minimum that we have to give. Just, I want everyone to know that I want to Just, I want everyone to know that I want to give as much as we possibly can, and I really look forward to having that discussion in the future, and I really hope we have that soon.
Member Lifler Kemp.
Yes. Well, I think Member Kirby really summarized this discussion well. I just was looking at my notes from it, and I was wondering, Mr. Sworowski, can you touch on, you know, I know many staff over the years that have been in these positions but then have moved into other, either part-time or full-time positions for the district. And I know we really work hard to offer internally those kinds of advancements. And can you just kind of touch on that? Thank you.
It is a nice starting spot where you can get some experience with the school district. The school district, the administration gets to see what you're like working with the students. And it's a place to move on from there where they would apply for permanent positions in many of the areas.
Thank you. Thank you. Member Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I indicated at the committee meeting, I'm going to make a motion on this. My motion is to amend hourly rate sheet minimum wage increases so that the minimum wage is offered by the IST 709 will be $1 more than the minimum wage is set by the state of Minnesota.
It's been moved by Member Johnston. Seconded by Member Oswald. Any discussion? Member Welty, would you like to have discussion on this, or is this, on the amendment, or would you like to discuss the whole packet?
Well, we have a motion on the floor, and I guess the questions that I've got about this, we have to be, until we have a discussion about this motion.
All right. Thank you.
So, I think you have something to say about it.
Member Kirby, then.
Oh, thank you. I, in principle, support this. I think that, I'm not sure this needs to be done tonight without some more discussion about that, but I, you know, I certainly, in principle, think that we should increase these as much as we can. But I don't think that I would support that tonight.
Member Welty?
Just a logistic question, then. If we were to make this motion sometime this summer, what would be the, would we have to direct the administration as to a timetable for when the implementation would begin? And is there a practical time that you could recommend to us for instituting this? During the summer, September, December, January?
Mr. Sworowski.
The only deadline we're under right now is an August 1st date to hit the minimum wage, which is what's before you. That would get us in compliance. Beyond that, we can pick any kind of timeframe. The majority of our hourly people are going to be back that first week of September. That's a possibility. I believe the minimum wage increases that we've put out there were for a three-year duration, and this is the third year of it. There would be, assuming nothing becomes before Minnesota next year to increase that, there's nothing stopping us from next year going and increasing it another 50 cents. I would like to mention with Member Johnston, I know when we were talking earlier, instead of the 50 cent increase, we were talking about a dollar increase. And the way your motion is phrased, it's a dollar above that minimum wage, so that's like, that, we were talking 50 cents plus another 50 cents for a dollar increase. The way the motion is worded is you've got your 50 cents plus a dollar on top of that. So, for instance, that $51,000 would be nearly tripled. So it would be $150,000 versus the $51,000. If you only want a dollar from where the minimum wage is now, meeting the minimum wage and 50 cents over that, that would be about $100,000.
I just have a point of clarification. Member Johnston, wherein our budget cuts from this last year, would you find that additional, would you think that we would find that additional funding? I think it's really important that we have this discussion and have it during that budget planning process, but I didn't hear it brought up this year during that planning process. I know you brought this up last year, and it was this, kind of that same question. So do you have any ideas where we would pull that from within it? Member Johnston?
Yes, I do. And then I'll say why I think this, we have to do this now. We have the contingency fund last year, and we talked about it. We said we couldn't do it because we didn't have a budget. This year, in the budget discussions, was very clear that we had lots of, if I recall, the contingency dollars are something like, what, $700,000, somewhere in there. I think that's well enough, and I think there's lots of other areas where we could save at least that much money, for example, attorney fees that we're spending an enormous amount of money on. And I think that those are areas that are right there that we can do it now. And I would like to advocate here to the community and the board. I think we all talk about this. Everybody says, yes, we don't want to pay minimum wage. We know that Wendy pays $12 an hour. Hardee's and McDonald's is paying $11.75 an hour. We all know that. I think, as Member Oswald said very clearly that, and eloquently, that these are our lowest-paid employees. And I think that they are nonetheless, they're important. Many of them work very minimal amount of hours. I guess I would like to see a further breakdown. I think that the costs are a little bit high. As Mr. Sworowski said, that these are estimated based on full-time workers. I think a little more accurate one may cut that cost down a little bit. Even if that cost is there, I think it's something we, as a community, we as a school, really have to address. When I look at some of these people that are, that would be affected, lifeguards, playground leaders, gym supervisors, activity leaders, pool directors, some are hourly substitutes in the maintenance and construction. Here's an interesting one, lead person for laborers. Right now, it's listed at $9.50 an hour. I don't know who they could be leading on the laborers, since we don't pay anybody any less than that. So my point is that we really, I think, have to pay more than minimum wage. And I think that these are not permanent. Forty-dollar-a-week jobs, they're small. I think the impact is going to be less than we want. I want to remind everybody that we, these employees have never got a raise. I think last year was the first year because of the minimum rate increase, since I've been on the board for seven years. So I think it's time that these people do get a rate increase. I think it's really wrong to talk about a 10% increase when they are the lowest-paid employees in the district. We're looking at a dollar-an-hour rate increase. I think that is something that we must address. I don't think we, as a school district, can afford to be paying any of our employees minimum wage. So I'm asking the board to vote for this motion.
Member Welty?
I think I've indicated in our previous discussion, I'm quite sympathetic to this. We have had budgetary questions, and I recently voted against a budget, sort of a symbolic vote against one that had to be passed. And I do not like leaning so heavily financially on the lowest-paid people in the school district. I was about to ask Mr. Sworowski, and maybe I will do that after this, about some of the figures that he gave us. I'd like to see this stuff written down so I could kind of, kind of pick it up a little bit more. You mentioned the $402,000. I was going to ask you exactly what that would mean. I was going to ask you how much this current change in, and you, this is probably was part of the discussion at some point in the past, how much that currently is. Don't need to have that information right now. I think that I would feel better if we had a little more of that information and we could talk about some of the implications. Maybe some people could be exempted because of the question about bumping. I, that's why I was hoping that perhaps we could get a direction from the administration as to when we could consider this. I probably, I would probably feel more comfortable tabling, offering a motion to table this until our August meeting pending some of the questions that I have, a fuller discussion of those things.
A point of clarification. Member Welty, are you offering to table the amendment? Is that what you're asking for?
Yes. Well, so actually, I'll make a motion that we table this, this motion until, until the August meeting pending a little more, a little fuller information from our administration about the consequences of this fiscally and contractually.
Member Welty has moved to table this amendment. I'm just going to clarify. You're moving to table this amendment to this? You need to pass the baseline because we do have to hit the threshold.
Well, actually, I-
We're actually talking specific-
I'm moving to table the motion that was made by Member Johnston until August.
Thank you.
Pending just more information in the August committee meetings.
It has been moved by Member Welty and seconded by Member Oswald. Any, we don't need to, sorry.
Can you table an amendment?
I don't think we can table amendment.
A motion in our subsequent meeting.
Yeah. I'm just looking to- Laying on the table is not debatable, so we will move into a vote. All those in favor of tabling the amendment brought forward by Member Johnston, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The tabling passes 6-0. That will be moved to the next month. We will continue with discussion on the motion at hand. Member, sorry, Member Lifler Kemp.
Okay. Couple clarifications. I mean, at any point, based on what Mr. Sworowski said, we can do pay increases. So, you know, at any point, we really could. And it sounds like for the discussion that's going on right now, that's exactly why I would want to have just more discussion. We don't have any hard numbers based on this particular motion. We also, I know we are in contract negotiations right now with at least one of our bargaining units, too. And I want to honor that process. I also, you know, again, agree with Member Kirby. I think we all, as we talked about at the committee meeting, want to pay our, all of our staff, no matter what position they're in, the best salary we can. That's not the argument. And so, Mr. Sworowski, is there any kind of clarification you'd want to give also about this list? Because what I recall, and I'm looking at my notes from last week, I mean, some of these positions, we don't even fill. Is that correct? And if you want to just go back to this list and provide us with more accurate information, thank you.
Mr. Sworowski.
That is correct. The number of the technical tutors as subs, you see in the $10-an-hour range on that list, are not generally used. Some of them, I think, where we were under community ed, where was the community ed? Oh, community education, yeah. Many of those fall under different areas that are paid for through community ed, not necessarily through the school district these days. So, again, as I would, as I would recommend, if you were going to revisit this in August, you would at least pass the minimum wage. So we are in line for August 1st. And then any discussions you want to have for the month of August, we can bring that forward again and see where you want to go from that point. In the meantime, we'll get you out the figures.
Member Welty?
I think that makes perfect sense. I have no difficulty authorizing the current recommended increases, and it would be something that we would just consider a base when we get into our discussions in August. And I would like, I wouldn't mind if our employees in HR knew that this, at the very least, was going to be taken care of tonight. So I plan on voting for the current resolution.
Member Lifler Kemp.
And I just, I guess, clarify for any discussion that we have in August or September, that between now and then, any questions that you would want more background information on, we submit to the chair, and then it can get to Mr. Sworowski. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you. I think that, you know, the community-wide, statewide, nationwide, the conversations that have gone on over the past, I don't know, two to five years regarding minimum wage increases and equitable pay have come a long way. And I'm glad that we are able to provide this increase and the increase last year, 50 cents last year and 50 cents this year. I'm glad that we've been able to make that increase, and I look forward to having more conversations. I think that the way you're doing it is really the responsible way to do it, to look at the funding, look at exactly what we're talking about before any decisions are made. So thank you for going about it that way.
Member Johnston. Thank you, Superintendent.
I agree with what's been said here. I do, I look forward to the discussion at the next committee meeting. But I just want to reiterate again that we raised 50 cents an hour than last year and this year because we, state law forced us to do that. And I've been, I've been talking about this ever since I've been on the board. None of these lowest-paid people have ever got a pay raise because the minimum wage hadn't been increased for, what, 15 years or something? And I really think that, that's time. So I'm looking forward to that discussion.
Mr. Sworowski.
I'd just like to add, this is the third year of the three-year. So I agree with what you're saying, Member Johnston. I think the first year was 75 cents, and then it was 50, and then this year is 50.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no further lights, we, the Business Committee has, sorry, the Human Resource Committee has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
I can give mine.
Oh, sorry. Member Oswald, I didn't say it. Member Oswald.
Sorry. Turn my mic off.
Just, I'll turn it on. Member Oswald.
I wanted to discuss three B.
Yes. Sorry.
That's the review of the superintendent evaluation process, including timeline. And that's the important part here is that I know in our robust discussion at the committee level, we really didn't discuss a timeline, and so it's in our report. And I'd like to hear the recommendation on a timeline from Mr. Sworowski or Mr. Grandseth, that, has that been discussed, or do you have any recommendations of that so far?
Member Oswald may provide a point of clarification. My understanding was that we would, the number of folks, the number of new members have talked about going through the end of this term so that we can walk through this, this year of the superintendent's evaluations, that people have that experience, and then from that experience can then, I understand that there are a lot of ideas about wanting to change it right now, but we also, and we also were waiting on the information from the School Board Association. That was the full packet. I know that you'd sent out a couple of pieces of the handout, and a number of people have asked about reading the full, the full report from that evaluation, and so-
I'm just asking about what's already printed right there.
I think that that is the timeline. The timeline is that we can-
And I don't agree necessarily with your summation of what, of the discussion during the committee. I know that we had discussed, my takeaway from that was that, yes, we are using the process as currently established, but that shouldn't prevent us from working towards a new kind of evaluation system while we're evaluating the way we have it already. It's going to take a long process. The timeline recommended by MSBA in those documents is to start in the summer and/or early fall, and it continues through the spring. And it's a very long and tedious process because it involves a lot of discussion and a lot of, of working things out and agreeing on the goals that we want to be evaluated in the direction our district is going to move. And so I was concerned that, you know, our agenda here says that it included a timeline, and I didn't remember a timeline being discussed or recommended. And that's the clarification. and I didn't remember a timeline being discussed or recommended. And that's the clarification I was asking for. Member Lefler Kemp?
Yeah, my, my understanding, both from the discussion as well as, um, the, including the timeline, was for, um, as Mr. Swirsky was reviewing, particularly for you three new board members, the process we've used now going into our fourth year with this, um, this, uh, the questionnaire that, that was handed out last week. And so that timeline was kind of the, the process we are using for this year. Um, and so, um, don't wanna get kinda hung up too much on the, you know, on, on the timeline, except, in my understanding, he did review kind of the, the timeline we're currently using, and that was what we had asked of him for last week's committee meeting.
As a point of clarification, I can see where there's a misunderstanding in what both of you are saying, and so, um, let's talk a little bit about that. I would, I think that, um, you know, I haven't seen that we did receive this, um, very recently. I haven't had a chance to read through this whole area, and, um, when I went through the superintendent evaluation training, the, my first year on, um, I just, I need to spend some time refamiliarizing myself with the documents. And so, um, I think it's fair for us to discuss, uh, to have the discussion in the coming month, again, to look at, at a timeline for, for updating this. Um, and so my, um, I guess I misunderstood that initial timeline piece and thought it, that it was clarifying for this year. Member, um, Mr. Swirsky.
Well, I, just to kind of understand what the real question is here, th- this current, um, evaluation will be given to the superintendent in November. Superintendent should have input into what his new evaluation will be, but he'll also be somewhat into that year again, assuming the next evaluation's at following November. Um, to go in and make changes now are assuming you're going to walk away from the other evaluation without having given it. So you're kinda, it's that, it's that crossover period. So if you wait until that October-November basis where you've had chance to work with the current evaluation and say, "I can see where this other evaluation might be more effective," or "we'll stay with the other one," if we do anything before that, you're assuming you're changing. But you can't wait too long after November if you are gonna create a new, uh, evaluation because the superintendent will already be into that year.
Member Johnston.
I think it's, uh, very, very clear that there's been no, no debate that this year the superintendent's evaluation will continue as it is. I think that's only fair and reasonable, and maybe even by statute. I think the superintendent would have to be informed, and I believe we did get a letter from the superintendent indicating that his contract is up, and I believe has to be renewed, I believe, in February. And I think, uh, when's the renewal date? Just correct that and then we'll go on.
Superintendent?
Um, I have, there's another year to my contract, um, but there's a clause where if it weren't going to continue, you would need to, um, notify me by November first.
Okay, okay. Stay uncorrected on that. But I think that, uh, that does show that there is contractual arrangements that the superintendent, as well as the board, has to respect, I think, and be very clear about. I think that if we're, uh, talking about changing the evaluation, which I think we should, I think the superintendent should be well aware of that. That's only, only fair. And, uh, have him give us feedback, and, uh, and I think the agenda item was clear about a timeline, and I'm glad to hear the chair say that this will be discussed again on the committee meeting. That's what I understood you to say. So I'm okay with that, but we do have to start moving forward on that.
And as a point of clarification, the superintendent isn't just informed, he's actually a part of the process of, as, by contract, of developing his evaluation. Member Oswald.
Yes, and I, I welcome his participation because this is a team effort in order to move our district forward in a positive way. We have to all be on board, and that's the way to do it collaboratively. Um, my only concern about talking about this for a third month before we actually take any action is, is two members are gonna be absent from that conversation during the committee meeting time as, as we have MSBA training in the cities. And so that's very discouraging to me, being that I'm the one that brought this forward, and then I already know I'm cut out of the conversation again. So I, I would really hope that we can have a conversation about this at a separate meeting at some point.
Uh, I think this, if you don't mind me answering, I think this might be a good opportunity for a committee of the whole discussion, as well too as a board. Superintendent?
Um, thank you. Uh, superintendent evaluation, um, you know, it's, it's a tool. We've been, um, working on our teacher evaluations, our principal evaluations, and our other staff evaluations, and, um, kinda working through those processes has, has been a, um, you know, kinda like changing the wheels on the bus when you're going down the road, kind of a, a feel a little bit, uh, because there's never a point where you, where you stop performing and, and start doing something different. There's always transition periods. Um, I, I am very open to having conversations about that evaluation. Uh, I've gotten a lot out of the evaluations over the, the past four years and got very, um, specific feedback from, from most of the members, and, uh, thought that was a, a good process. It's based on, um, areas of competency for superintendency is what it is. I've also seen models that, like the ones that, uh, have, are in the packet that you received, that are, uh, more goal-based, having, um, instead of, I don't know how many items are on the current evaluation. It's, uh, I don't know, six, seven, eight pages long and, uh, has many, many, many items on it. And, um, while it's, it's good feedback if people, uh, see me in very different settings, and many of you do see me in, in all kinds of settings, um, that are covered in that evaluation. Uh, I'm open to talking about a goals-based evaluation. Um, setting those goals is the, uh, probably the most challenging part because they have to be, um, well, what we educators call smart goals, and I'm sure you've all heard us talking about smart goals. Uh, they have to be, um, specific and measurable, attainable, realistic and time-bound. Um, and so making sure that, uh, the goals are reasonable are probably what, uh, the greatest time will be. Also, how that aligns with the District-wide Continuous Improvement Plan that was developed with input from our administrators and our teachers and the community through Think Kids, and how, how all of that works together will be part of those conversations. So I think that they're good conversations. Um, I'm, you know, I, I respect that, uh, we'll go through this process the same. I'm totally open to these conversations. Uh, I'm not so much worried about, uh, that it has to be done by, by this time. I think as long as we're all having conversations and agree on those things, uh, we can make that transition, um, as the time is right to make that transition.
Thank you for your, uh, the clarification. Member Johnston?
Yeah, just, um, just a suggestion is that, uh, we do have subcommittees, uh, for reasons to do this. I think that this is, I know I threw out the idea that Member Oswald throw together some kind of a format as a draft, and, uh, she was hesitant about doing that. Uh, again, put a couple people on it. Uh, I think something like this is hard to do and really not appropriate for a committee of the whole. Certainly, if you wanna go that way, you do, but, uh, somebody just has to start. And, uh, you know, a small group of people can start that. And of course, I, and again, reminding everybody, a subcommittee doesn't have any authority. It just comes back to the, us, the board, and this suggestion.
Member Lefler Kemp.
Yeah, I just, uh, had pulled out the, the packet as well, and it just might be helpful, being we're having this discussion at this point, um, for the public to kinda know why we evaluate the superintendent. So could, could I just read these couple points, just for clarification? So, "A quality superintendent evaluation process provides benefits not only for a school board and its superintendent, but also benefits the school community and the community at large by allowing school board members to follow school district progress and learn about a superintendent's ongoing professional development." And you kinda touched on that from the feedback that you've been receiving. Um, "Providing input, feedback and support for a superintendent to help him or her improve throughout the school year, creating and establishing a climate of trust and collaboration, providing the school community and the community at large with assurance that their priorities are being addressed, and providing oversight and assurance that a school board's vision, priorities and policies are being implemented and as attended." And so I, I hope as we move into the current process that we're using, that we kinda think about, no matter what tool we're using, these are really what the goals are of doing a superintendent evaluation process, regardless of the tools. That's pretty standard. So just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Member Lefler Kemp. Uh, Member Johnston?
Yeah, I forgot to mention something very quick, which I'm sure all you other members that have went to these sessions from MSBA have found out. It's, uh, is, MSBA is very clear that such evaluations are done by the board, not by the superintendent's staff. And that is a major objective, or a major, uh, goal, a major function of the school board. And I think that that is something, again, is why I suggest my subcommittee may be a way to start that off. Because again, that is our responsibility, not the, not the minute, not the superintendent's, uh, staff.
Members, thank you for finding clarification in that, and appreciate that discussion. Um, seeing no further lights. Um, all those in favor of the Human Resources Committee report? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It passes six, zero. Um, we're gonna take a three-minute, um, break, and we'll, uh, to return at seven fifty-five. One thing, um, I failed to note was that, uh, retirement snuck by us on the last committee a, a meeting. I wanna just note that-
I was gonna say that too.
-Mr. Leiter has put in his retirement for September. And so, I know you've done a long term of service with our district, and we appreciate all of your work, and, um, I'd like to turn it down if possible, but I know that you probably have fun plans ahead, knowing you, Mr. Leiter. So, thank you for all of your work in our district. We're lucky to have had you. All right. Um, next we'll move on to the Business Committee report. In lieu of our, with, uh, Member Sansit having an excused absence, I've asked Member Kirby to, um, continue with the committee report. So, thank you again, Member Kirby.
Uh, thank you. Uh, the Business Committee met on, uh, Tuesday, July nineteenth, and, uh, we were, uh, presented with financial report, and this was reviewed. Um, the final adopted budget of fiscal year two thousand seventeen was presented, and some, uh, questions and, um, numbers were discussed, uh, regarding that. Um, there were no bids, quotes, RFPs, um, policies and recommendations, uh, new policy seven oh eight, transportation of non-public school students, and we were introduced to, uh, to Mr. Mike Johnson, who's the new transportation manager, uh, who we were introduced, and his background, uh, was given to us. Quite impressive, and we're quite glad and fortunate to have his expertise and background, um, working for the district. Um, the, um, transportation of non-public school students, new policy seven oh eight, is, uh, an MSBA model policy. We don't have any current policy that correlates with this new policy, but, uh, it's almost entirely based on state statute. And it's recommended that we approve policy seven oh eight for the second reading. This was the first reading. Uh, policy seven eleven, video recording on school buses was also, uh, discussed, and this was the, uh, second reading. Uh, there was no corresponding, there is no corresponding current policy that correlates with this new policy, and it's recommended that, uh, the Duluth School Board approve policy, uh, seven eleven, uh, as well. Um, some contracts were, um, uh, reviewed. Uh, fuel education for online educational products in the amount of, uh, thirty thousand dollars from August thirteenth of this year through August thirty-first of next year was presented, and it's recommended that, uh, the school board approve the contract with fuel education. Uh, there was a, an extended discussion of workers' compensation and probability liability insurance policies and premiums, and, uh, these were presented to us, as well as the, um, premium summaries and comparisons from our previous insurer to, uh, the one is proposed, which was in fact one that we had more than two years ago. Uh, there were some, uh, modified, uh, recommendations, uh, from this, and, uh, it was recommended that we, uh, spend an additional, uh, it's about twenty-three hundred dollars, twenty-two seventy-eight, uh, to increase our umbrella to cover, um, or increase that amount to increase our umbrella coverage from two million to three million dollars, uh, that was recommended. And it was also, uh, recommended that we, uh, obtain, uh, cyber liability coverage with, uh, a corporate, corporation called Beasley. They're the only ones that write this insurance, and, uh, that went up, um, very slightly and would be in the amount of twenty-two thousand, a hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety cents for a million dollars of coverage. And it was explained to us how, uh, important this would be should we be, uh, sued in, uh, this regard. Um, uh, Mr. Leiter, uh, presented us with some change orders related to the facilities project, um, indicating that there were some unforeseen findings in some of these, uh, projects that were being undertaken, um, including the discovery of lead in some of the windows that were being renovated. And this, uh, resulted in increase of, uh, costs for this, and it's recommended that the school board approve the change order, um, regarding the window replacement and Masoner Project at Myers Wilkins, which would add approximately three thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty cents to a previously awarded bid of eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, uh, five hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. So it's not a large amount, given the total amount of the initial, uh, bid. There was also a change order regarding the facilities, uh, uh, project at Denfeld High School. Um, excavating, uh, the site resulted in the finding of some unexpected findings, which also, uh, we need to under, revise some underground plumbing and, uh, relocate some fibers, uh, fiber, what's the word I want?
Optic.
Fiber optic cable. And, uh, this would, uh, increase, uh, the amount of, uh, that. Uh, some excessive, um, time spent because of weather also resulted in a partial increase. In any case, the total increase was twenty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. And it's recommended that the school board approve this change order as listed in bid number twelve forty-seven to Denfeld High School, which adds, uh, twenty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-six cents to the previously awarded bid, and the total contract will now be six hundred and sixty thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty-six, uh, cents. The, uh, Northwood Children's Services Merrick Creek Academy lease was brought forward. This is a three-year agreement with an annual cost of ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. This is the same rate as the previous contract and differs only in the date and the signatories, and there's no other change in that. Um, uh, resolutions, let's see, page seventy-two, um, "The Acceptance of Donations to Public Schools," uh, Resolution B. seven sixteen thirty-three eighty-three. "Whereas Minnesota Statute four sixty-five point oh three requires the school district to accept donations by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full, and whereas acceptance of the donations in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below-described donations from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various organizations." The total amount was twenty-two thousand two hundred seventy- The total amount was twenty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-two cents. And this, these involved donations to Denfeld, East, Laura MacArthur, Leicester Park, and Homecroft. And I move that this resolution be accepted.
Move by Member Kirby, seconded by Member Welty. Seeing no lights, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Resolution passes six zero.
Thank you. A second resolution is pretty formal. It's a resolution to accept some authorized bank account signers, Resolution B seven dash sixteen dash thirty-three eighty-four, resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number seven oh nine, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that it hereby authorize the following, Ordine East, Bank Institution of the Duluth Teachers Credit Union, and the removal of authorized signer Margaret Weber and the addition of authorized signer Irene Frisma. And I move that this resolution be accepted.
Move by Member Kirby, seconded by Member Welty. Seeing no lights, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you.
It passes six zero.
A further resolution regards issue bond refundings. And this is a lengthy resolution, B dash seven dash sixty, dash sixteen dash thirty-three eighty-five. I will just read the title. Resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an amendment to installment purchase contract and a supplement to declaration of trust and approving the issuance, sale, and delivery of eighty-two thousand, eighty-two million, six hundred and five thousand dollar full-term refunding certificates of participation, Series two oh one six A. Mr. Steve Pumper from PMA Financial is here to answer some questions regarding this resolution and the figures therein. We had an extensive discussion of that at the time, but I'll ask Mr. Pumper. Thank you for coming and if you have something to add to this.
Thank you. So it has been moved by Member Kirby. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second of a Member Lefler Kemp. And now discussion. Thank you, Mr. Pumper, for joining us this evening.
You're welcome, Madam Chair, Board Members, Mr. Superintendent. It's fun to be here tonight, to be able to report on such wonderful news. You had a very successful sale today, which I'm happy to report to you today. A little refresher, Board Members, back on, at your June twenty-first meeting, the board passed a resolution, was called an authorizing resolution, which gave PMA Securities the chance to act as your financial advisor to do a negotiated sale with Northern Securities, which would be the purchaser of your bonds, with the attempt to refund your two thousand and eight B full-term certificate of participations with the intent of getting savings, to get future tax savings from your taxpayers. So once that resolution was approved, we went through all the processes that we go through, along with Northern Securities, to market your bonds, to work with your bond council, to make sure they're, everything was being done in a legal way. And we actually were going to go, our original intent was to have the sale last week. And this is one of the advantages of having a negotiated sale. The feedback that Northern Securities was getting from their prospective buyers, the people ultimately, they would sell your bonds to, was that they wanted a little more time. They said, this is a really interesting project, you're going to have some decent yields on this, but we want to have, it's a big dollar amount. We want to have some time to evaluate and work through their processes that they need to do, especially with everything that's happening in the bond market recently. So we postponed the sale because you would get better reaction if we waited on it. And we actually did it this morning. So the results were, let me just kind of go back to your authorizing resolution. You gave us authority that we could sell bonds that could not exceed ninety-five million dollars. And as the title of the resolution states, the actual sale amount was eighty-two million, six hundred and five thousand dollars. The resolution said it had to meet the Minnesota State Statute three percent savings test. And the actual savings is five point nine zero two percent. The three percent savings, if you were to put into a dollar amount, would have been two point nine seven five million dollars. When I reported to you back on the twenty-first, I told you, based on market conditions that day, we thought your savings would be somewhere between five point eight million and five point nine million. And again, I know you have those sheets at your table right now, but we're really happy to report that the actual savings was six million, one thousand, one hundred and one dollars. It was a, what we call a TIC, a true interest cost, of two point one zero six percent. And this is, you have twelve years left to pay on these, on your old bonds, which now will be refunded by these new bonds. So that's kind of the equivalent of, you know, taking out a mortgage, a twelve-year mortgage for two point one percent. So you've got obviously a very good, good rate on that. The actual debt reduction, I don't want to bore you with all these numbers, but these are the really, in my mind, the most important ones. You will actually, over the next eleven years, levy six point eight million dollars less than you would have if you did not take this action. So that's an average roughly of six hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars a year. And that will start with the, your levy that you'll take action on this December. So for taxes that your taxpayers will, will start paying in two thousand seventeen, the next calendar year, it'll be roughly six hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars less because of the action that you'll be taking tonight. A reminder, I know I've mentioned this to Board Members before, especially as you talk about your budgets and some other items as well, this is truly taxpayer savings. It does not help any operational parts of your budget, but it means that your taxpayers will have some tax relief. So it's certainly a wise and fiscally responsible thing for a school board to take action on. You already have a motion that's been introduced and seconded, so that will be the ratifying resolution tonight. And that will pretty much give the authority to the people who bought the bonds, Northern Securities, that yes, you're okay with this. The closing date on these bonds will be August seventeenth. Once again, we will work with your bond counsel, Freiberger Buchanan, and with Northern Securities to make sure all the proper procedures are done in place so that the bonds close on the seventeenth. And with that, I'll certainly stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Members, other questions? Member Johnston?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Pumper, for your information. You're hard work on this. Couple things that I'd like clarified on this is, you mentioned this, this thing is selling for eighty-two point six million, but yet there's ninety-four million dollars figure at the bottom of page three. And could you just explain what that number is?
I'm, I need to find the right page because I don't have page numbers on mine, so I just want to make sure I can explain appropriately.
Let's see, section.
Does it have a title on the top of the page? Mr. Johnston?
No, it's section B, section two, section two B of the resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's the resolution. I apologize.
Oh, okay.
I was looking at our financial things. Thank you, Jackie. And now go ahead and tell me what, it was on page three?
Yeah, you mentioned, I wish I think bond is selling for eighty-two point six million, which is up there, but down there, the ninety-four million.
Okay, very good question. All right. So what the ninety-four million means is, and I talked about this briefly at the last meeting, is that the sellers or the purchasers, people who are buying your bonds, they want to pay a premium to get a higher coupon yielding at the end. So for instance, you have some maturities, some of your twelve-year maturities have a five percent coupon with it. So that means a purchase, who's buying a bond is going to get five percent interest rates along the way. But in order to get that five percent, they have to pay you more than the par value or the face value of those bonds. So the purchase price, Mr. Johnson, means that the difference between the eighty-two million dollars worth of par and the ninety-four million dollars is the additional premium that they are offering you to purchase it at the interest rates that they want.
Okay, so if I recall in our discussion, we had that there was some confusion there, which, that since we are termin, or we'll say refinancing, or the appropriate word that you use, is that, that difference between those two numbers, and we were talking about a ten million dollar number when we had the committee meeting, or that's when we had our other meeting. Now is that that same ten million dollar number, which I recall you saying that's kind of a penalty that we had to pay, but yet because interest rates is lower, even though we're paying this ten million dollar early refinancing, it comes in lower because of lower interest rate? Am I still understanding that correct?
No, it is, I think you're mischaracterizing, or maybe I did in the past. It certainly is not a penalty of, if you were to use the word penalty, if anything, it'd be to the purchaser. Because they are purchasing a face value that you are selling, worth of eighty-six million dollars, and they are giving you ninety-four million dollars for that face value. In exchange for that, you have some higher yielding coupons.
Okay, well, looking on your sheet that you gave us out here back a week ago, or whenever it was, you, estimated par value was eighty-four million, that's eighty-two, which because of the better rate that you've got, I'm assuming.
Correct, yep.
Then that number of reoffering premium of ten million dollars.
Yep.
Then there was another number of six hundred thousand dollars for debt service funds on hand, for a total estimate of ninety-five million. So if I recall, we have outstanding principal currently of about somewhere around an eighty million dollars, if I remember right.
Eighty-six point nine is what you are refunding. So in other words, you are taking principal amount right now, again, if you did not refund, forget interest, but just straight alone principal amount of eighty-six million, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. You are exchanging that for eighty-two million dollars, no debt outstanding.
Okay, so we had eighty million dollars, eighty-six million dollars was our premium.
Eighty-six, nine, two, five.
For, right. And now we're.
It was your par, not your premium. That was your outstanding bonds.
Okay, well, what's the, what I'll call, what's the principal that we have?
Yeah, that was a principal. Par, I'm sorry. Par is principal.
Okay, that's eighty-six million. And now the new, the new one is only eighty-two million?
Correct. Eighty-two, six, oh, five.
Okay, so the discussion we had, I think, with one other fellow was, he thought that ten million dollars was a additional penalty, but that is incorrect. So we have eighty-two million dollars as our total principal now. So our total principal, if we, if we, if we refinance, I'd like to do, next year, we would have less principal to pay.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Member, Member Oswald?
I'm looking at Exhibit A on the very back of the resolution.
Yep.
And I'm looking at the total tax levy numbers for two thousand fifteen, the total tax levy with all of our certificates for two thousand fifteen, sixteen is eight point nine, seven, three million dollars. In two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven, that increases to fifteen, one, fifty million, one hundred and five thousand dollars. Are you saying that by refinancing these bonds, these numbers would be increased by six hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, but I want you to make sure Board Members understand, the exhibit that's on the back of this page is not all of your outstanding debt. This is the outstanding debt that's associated with your full-term certificates of participation. And since they're all kind of interwoven, that's why they, they created their own exhibit for that. But that is not all your outstanding debt. But to answer your question directly, is yes, if you would take that, that last column of numbers, if you add roughly six hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars to each of those, that's what your levy would have been if you didn't do this refunding.
And so the different, I just quickly subtracted, and that's an increase of seven point one million dollars over the next twelve years, that we're going to be increasing our levy anyway. So we're actually saving money, but taxes will still be going up to pay these? Is that?
No, because this is, this, again, this is only, an analyst came up at last at another meeting, this is one piece of your debt service puzzle. And so as other debt is being retired, this debt is going up so that, you know, some of your debt's being relieved, so it allowed this debt to take its place. So your debt actually is fairly flat.
Okay.
It doesn't sound like you're.
I'm not quite sure how that happens, but I don't have a question to follow up with.
Oh, okay, all right.
Member Johnston?
Sure. You said that we have an effective rate of, I think, two point one percent, but yet on page four, the interest rate is listed as three to five percent. And could you explain that one?
So the interest rates, that's a good point, and that's, that is what needs to be put in this resolution. So those are, again, the coupon paying rates. So to each one of these years, a three percent or a five percent or a two and a half percent, that's, you know, per the schedule, is what each of those bonds will have attached to them. But because when you add that additional, you know, ninety million dollars of premium, that effectively lowers each of these interest rates for the district. And that's why your rate is two point one percent. Again, an example would be if you took out a hundred thousand dollar mortgage and they gave you a hundred and twenty thousand dollars or a hundred and ten thousand dollars at closing. And, and your effective interest rate would be two percent, even though you may be paying five percent on your payments, because you're getting all this cash upfront. You're getting more than you sold the bonds for.
Thank you. Member Welty?
Yes, if we just talk about the effective rate, what, what was it with the old bonds? And what will it be with these newly negotiated bonds?
Well, the new negotiator is the two point one percent.
And before that?
I don't know that, I don't, I don't have information with me.
Was that a three or four percent maybe, or?
I would, I'd be speculating. And the difference would be, it's a little apples to oranges too, because when you sold the original bonds, they were sold at a twenty-year, there was twenty years total. So you're, normally speaking, your interest rate is going to be higher on twenty years than twelve years.
True. When we, this is one series of bonds, and as I understand the law, you described it to me, we have, we have one chance to negotiate a change, and we have to wait ten years or something like this, and this is about twelve years. So effectively, we're not going to be able to revisit this. But I had asked you if you anticipated that some of the events with the Brexit over in Europe were going to have people in Europe and other parts of the world bidding on our municipal debts? Is that pretty much what happened? And do you have any idea who it is, who's actually the holder of our, our bonds?
I could, no, I don't, although I do not believe they are foreign holders. They are major funds that purchased your bonds, and some retail people were actually interested in your bonds as well. We don't believe Berthix had a huge effect on your specific issue. I think it caused some confusion in the market during that week. And it also, one of the other reasons that we delayed the sale is because it just put some people off, wanting to wait for the market to calm down a little bit, to feel confident about, you know, what part two purchase I'm at.
Are there some, when will our next opportunity be to consider making, to renegotiate some different series of bonds that we have?
Well, first, let me get, address your first statement anyways. So on these bonds, these actually have a call date the last two years. So again, it's a twelve-year issue. So you can refund this new issue that you just did, but you're right, it will be ten years from now. So you can refund the last two maturities, which are significant. There's still, that your last two maturities are still significant dollar amounts. So it's possible, but, you know, that's ten years from now. Your other bonds had a two thousand, your, the most recent call date on some of your outstanding issues is two thousand nineteen as well. It looks, based on our study right now, that those will not be able to be refunded, probably until you get to the call date, which will be two thousand nineteen, which would mean we actually would start that process in two thousand eighteen. But it would be in two thousand nineteen.
So we, we can't look forward to renegotiating any of our bonds for another three or four years?
That would not be a conclusive statement. That's what it would look like right now.
Thank you. Member Johnston?
A couple of questions on this sheet that were handed out a week ago, the sources and uses. You recall that sheet? Two numbers on that that I'd like to ask about. One is the debt service funds on hand. I'm just wondering, what, what is that? And why is it there? And where does it come from? And where does it go?
Good question. The, the first maturity that is refunded in this twelve-year bond is February first of two thousand and seventeen. And Board Members, your Minnesota finance is complicated, so you actually levied for your February first, two thousand and seventeen bond payment already with the levy that you passed this last December in two thousand and fifteen. So the people who are paying their property taxes right now through calendar two thousand sixteen, that levy's already been set, and you are collecting that money, and you will have that money on hand to pay your, your February first, two thousand seventeen. So you're. So you're, you are roughly over collecting six hundred thousand dollars of levy dollars because the two thousand seventeen payment is lower now by six hundred thousand than it would have been back in December when you set your levy. So you have those monies on hand, that's that six hundred thousand dollar number that will go into the escrow to pay for this, or help pay for this refunding.
Okay, so that's not money, that's money that was already, that came from the tax levy?
Correct.
That's sitting there in wherever it's sitting, and then we can use that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Another number that, that I'm just going to bring up are the, the uses of the fund, and one of that is the cost of issuances, and looking at this, it looks like about six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for cost of issuances, and now, where does that, does that money roll back into this, this ninety, it says ninety-two million, eighty-two million dollars, does that include six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars too, to, to initiate this?
Yep, so the, correct, so the total amount of bonds that you sold, part of those bonds will be used to pay cost of issuance, the rest go into your escrow account to refund your bonds. So everything I'm reporting to you tonight is the actual net savings you will receive after all those costs are paid.
That's all that's taken out.
Yep, that's true.
Okay, okay. It looks like I got the only one on all, say some more, I'm, I voted for this before, I'm going to vote against it this time. I appreciate all your hard work, Mr. Pumper, and, but I think that we had a frank discussion at our bond meeting, I don't know if you were at the first one that we had, I think you were at the second one. My concern is that I'm not happy to hear that we cannot refinance anything, I have some skepticism of that, despite our lawyers saying that there's nothing we can do about it. When we look at, I think that we have to find some way to do it, I've asked you to scratch your head, unless you were doing that at the last meeting we had, appreciate that, but I think that we do need to have an alternative here. This is, obviously, this is, I'm in favor of saving six hundred thousand a year for the taxpayer, but one of the numbers that I think we ran out to you, if we could combine all our debts and refinances, we could save a whole lot more money than that and make it a whole lot simpler, and gladly, I'm not a bond lawyer, but I would certainly like to, I will be getting other opinions on this from other people before this next year comes up, and I'm a little bit disappointed that, that people say we can't do anything. You know, I'm, I'm paying you, not just to you, but these other lawyers to find solutions, and reminding people there that we have a deficit, this year we had another three point three million deficit, we were pulling three point four million dollars out for three other bonds, not this one, but the three other COPs that we have, and, I mean, that's what I want to stop, and, and I appreciate trying to save money for the taxpayer, but I think we could have done better. I think that we can not only save money to the taxpayer, I think we could have saved money for our classrooms, and that's, and how we got into this mess, I just want to make sure that people know that, I think that was extremely ill-thought-out, why we got into this point where we cannot refinance anything, why we told everybody we were going to have all these savings, but yeah, we weren't, we really didn't have any documentation of any of those savings, I think it's put us in a hole, which is very difficult, and I'm certainly hoping that people in the future don't attempt to get something for nothing, like apparently we were told we were going to get, because this is impacting the classrooms, and this is just, I think we should have fixed it. So that's why I'm voting against it, and I will be looking for ways to solve this in the future, certainly hopefully with your help, and, and talking to MDE and other lawyers that I have to find some ways so we can stop pulling money out of the classrooms, because I think that's key for our success and actually our future in this school. And I think that people that set up these bonds should have, and COPs should have known that it was going to greatly impact our classrooms, which we would not be able to afford, and we're at that point.
Member Lefler Kemp?
I do not have any questions per se, I, I just wanted to comment that I appreciated both this, at last week's meeting in June, and the couple of years I've been on the board, all of the expertise that we have to help us understand this process each year, this process, and so I really wanted to thank you for both answering our questions, correcting misinformation, and also your expertise in the, again, the expertise that Mr. Hanson brought in, and the years of experience of people to help us understand this back in June, so just a thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, member Welty.
Just a quick comment, I, I appreciate, member Johnston's concerns about this. I'll certainly vote for, for, for this, and I'm, I have no doubt that member Johnston is pleased about the, the reductions in taxes that the taxpayers will see as a result of this, but voting against this is like voting against history, which is something a lot of us would like to relive, so I will, I will vote for this, and, and not against history, which I wish I could vote against sometimes.
Member Oswald?
I just want to say that, that I think member Johnston's reasoning is very clear, but I don't feel that I can turn down six hundred thousand dollars a year in savings, hoping that we can save more. I want to save hundred, save six hundred thousand dollars a year and know we can save more, and I think we can agree to this cost savings for our taxpayers and still work to find more ways we can, we can eliminate that three point four million dollar transfer out of the general fund, because that is essentially what we're fighting, and, and we need to work together to find those solutions, and I really hope our board can collaborate together and work towards that end, so we can save our classrooms and give them what they need.
Thank you, member Kirby.
Well, thanks, I'd like to thank you too for all of your input, I'll be voting for this, I, I appreciate member Johnston's wishes, but it kind of, not to be too demeaning, but it reminds me of someone who says, "Don't bother me with facts, I know what I believe." Well, you got to deal with the facts in front of you, and I think we have a lot of people who know a lot of stuff. I think school finance is, in Minnesota at least, is one of the most difficult things to wade through, that I've had to wait, try and wade through. So I appreciate all of this, and I'll be voting for it.
Member Johnston?
Certainly I'm looking forward to the board and working to try to find a solution next year to this, and the reason I'm voting against this is that I think we could do better. It's not a question of the facts, the facts are that we are pulling three point three million dollars out of the general fund, nobody seems to want to admit that. That's the reason we don't have seven period days, that's why we almost eliminated zero hour this year, that's why we have a deficit of three million this year, we've had deficits up to seven million here only three years ago, and that why, the facts are very clear, the facts are that we have deficits because we've been pulling so far thirty million dollars out of the general fund, and this is just a scratch, this is just a scratch in that, it is, is not helping us, our school out whatsoever, and is not, and it is not a solution. And, and I, although I certainly will be expecting to see tax certification go down by six hundred thousand this year, I'm looking forward to that, but I will see if that happens.
All right, seeing no further lights, just a thank you for the presentation and your trip up today, and I also look forward to saving our taxpayers some dollars, though I'm hearing a lot of ideas within the board of how we can save additional, but thank you for making sure that we stay on the legal path and understand all the different statutes that we, as a school district, need to adhere by, so thank you to you and your team. All those in favor of author, of the amendment B dash seven dash sixteen dash thirty-three sixty-five?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes five to one. Thank you very much, Mr. Pumper, and safe travels back to the cities. Member Kirby, you may continue. Oh, yeah, turned it on and then...
Oh, thank you. Onward and upward, okay. There were several informational items presented, some expenditure contracts, there were no revenue contracts, other contracts, change orders, Mr. Leiter gave us an update on the facilities management and capital project status report, which is in the packet, and lastly, we had a discussion about broadcasting committee meetings. Mr. Bart Smith was here, who gave us some cost estimates of what this would entail, and I think he estimated it would be a little less than two thousand dollars, assuming we only spent five hours a month in committee meetings, and some ways of adjusting seating, perhaps using interns to help to phrase this were, were discussed, and so it was decided we would try this for a six-month time period and then reevaluate what we were going to do after that. And I think that was the end of the business report.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Would you like to move it?
Oh, so I move, what's this, one resolution at the end here?
That'll be for...
Okay, so I, I move that we accept the business committee report.
Second. Moved by member Kirby, seconded by member Lefler Kemp, member Oswald, what would you like to pull?
I'd like to pull four C one, four C one, six F, and six F, and I don't, this one con, or memorandum of understanding that doesn't have a item number, it's on page ninety-eight, I believe it's in section six, but it's not listed. It's the memorandum of understanding about community school collaborative.
Expenditure contracts then, so six A. All right, do, do other members have items they would like to discuss? Member Johnston?
One A.
All right, so we will begin, we'll go in order, member Johnston, oh, member Welty?
Yeah, um, four B one.
Member Johnston?
Thank you, Madam Chair, the financial, member Welty, did you have another, I think you pulled?
A point of, member Welty had another he was hoping to pull.
No, I'm sorry.
Member Johnston?
Okay, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, I thank you for sending out some of the clarifications on our last vendor list. One of those clarifications was a bill for attorney Kevin Rupp for ten thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. I went back and looked, as I normally do, back in May, he had a bill of eighteen thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and fourteen cents, and in March, he had a bill of four thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-one cents, and February, he had a bill of ten thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-eight cents. I'll go along with back to the total that we've paid for Kevin Rupp, the last year was seventy-five thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars, and it totally amazes me that this administration hires Kevin Rupp, after all the pain and misery that he put us through as a school board. It's unbelievable that we are still hiring him. It is not acceptable, I'd like to know what all these, this is, should remind me, this is after all the charges that were paid that went to Kevin Rupp to go after me, failed, of course. I'd like to know, and I, if I don't get answers on this, I'll be asking what all these are for, and I don't think that he is a competent attorney, and it really concerns me that we're spending seventy-five thousand dollars on an attorney, we can't spend seventy-five thousand dollars for how many, a hundred paid people that are working maybe ten hours a week, that we're talking about, worrying about eighteen hundred dollars for broadcasting committee meetings, and we're wasting seventy-five thousand dollars on Kevin Rupp? It's just, it's unbelievable.
It's a point of information, member Johnston, that we, as a board, approve the attorneys at the beginning of each year, and so that's where that approval list, I know that you did provide some feedback during that meeting, that you didn't support that, it did pass the board at that time, and so hearing what you're saying, but, um, thank you. Member Welty?
I noted that the line share of this month's payments go back to April, and human resources, and I did put in a request to Mr. Swirsky to give me some, some detail on that, that expenditure and what it is that human resources need, that kind of legal representation to take care of. Will also note that in the past, I've, I've asked for the, the, the timesheets and information that the attorneys have charged us in previous years, and that's not been provided me, but perhaps that would be something that we could start getting a little more detail on. Attorneys are not always a luxury, but they can be expensive, and I, I think we have an obligation to know just what we're being billed for.
Member Johnston?
I should have said also, this is only one of our attorneys. When I talk to other school board members across the state, the amount that we spend on attorneys is one of the highest of school districts that I've ever talked to, and that means there's something wrong. Certainly there's been something wrong for the last two years, and to have these bills piling up like this, and we're worried about paying somebody minimum wage, unbelievable.
Seeing no further lights, we'll move on to four, wait, four A one, member Welty?
Um, four B one is what I, I was interested in.
Oh, excuse me.
Sorry if I got my alphabet mixed up. I think Art had...
All right, so then...
Four A two.
Member Johnston, four A two.
I was hoping Mr. Welty could speak a little bit, give me a break, but since, since I'm on, on the line here, I will say something about that. I was very happy to see that the district decided to go with liberty, I think that was a very wise move, and just one thing, it saved us money, but it sounds like we're also going to get better policy, and one of the issues that I was going to ask is, do we have professional liability in liberty? Does anybody know, can everybody answer me that?
Mr. Hanson?
Hello?
Mr. Leiter?
Chair Harlow, members of the board, member Johnston, we, we do have professional liability assurance within our school leaders' legal liability, and there was some changes in the coverage, where our, our prior carrier, the coverage did not provide defense where there were not monetary claims associated with the claim, there was not money being sought, and so the new coverage will, will provide that defense. So I, I think it's a better coverage, as member Johnston indicated, with, with liberty in that regard.
Thank you, member Welty.
Yes, when he was giving the report, member Kirby mentioned the question of cyber insurance. I was going to ask, when I took a look at this, if this package that we're looking at included the changes that you had recommended, so when we vote on this, will those be part of the package that we approve cyber, and I think there was another one that, I can't recall offhand.
Mr. Hanson or Mr. Leiter?
Yeah, member Welty, members of the board, it is in the recommendation...
Yeah, Member Welty, members of the board, it is in the recommendation. The board's action identifies the additional umbrella coverage and also the cyber liability coverage. And so that would be our intent with this recommendation and your approval, that we would purchase those policies in the increased amounts.
Thank you. Member Johnston?
There was a comment made during the discussion on the committee about, all we've got to do is call up these people, and we'll get our insurance policy. I'd just like to pass on to everybody that I tried to get Riverport's insurance policy, and it was refused to me. Mr. Leiter tried to help on that, thank you. The insurance company was completely uncooperative. Also, of course, they were, I feel, one of the main leaders, Riverport Insurance Company, in pursuing this lawsuit. They were always at the side of the people down in all of our negotiations. And I don't know what happened on the other side. I certainly know that the Riverport Insurance was there. I have tried to talk to them, and extremely rude people. And I can say, good riddance, Riverport.
Member Welty, from my recollection, when a school district is sued, we give it to our insurance agency, and then they appoint the lawyer that is going to be at that. And so that is why you saw people when you'd made that decision with our district. And so in the instance of not heading all the way back down into the rabbit trail of that, I'd request that we continue moving forward with our discussion this evening. Did you, Member Johnston?
Reminder, you weren't there. I was. I know who was there.
Member Johnston, I was just clarifying that if you saw a representative, that's what I understood, so, thank you.
You were not there.
Member Johnston, thank you. Member Lefler Kemp, did you, Member Lefler Kemp, did you have a question, did you have a comment?
No, I actually got it answered. I just had made a note after the discussion at the committee meeting, which, again, I greatly appreciated, kind of the in-depth information you gave us last week. But just the foresight, again, that you had when you were comparing these coverages and bringing it forward on making sure we had the cyber liability coverage. And so I just had made a note to myself to thank you for that foresight, for all the reasons we were speaking about at the business committee meeting.
Thank you. Member Welty?
Defensive, Member Johnston, he fell into a $75,000 rabbit hole. That would be a very difficult one for most any school board member to forget, as it is about three times what school board members earn in Duluth over the course of four years. So I'd still be brushing myself off if I'd fallen there, and I can sympathize with Member Johnston.
Member Welty, your questions on B4B1?
Thank you. We had a discussion about the windows at Myers Wilkins. And as we are replacing them, we discovered, when the contractors began replacing, that there was lead paint, which required the change in the change order. It's going to take somebody, some effort to remove lead paint before we put those new windows in. Now, we've already authorized this, and they're already working on it, but it's close to $1 million. It's $847,000 worth of work to replace the Myers Wilkins Elementary School windows. I was asking somebody about this, and I wish I had had that conversation at the time of the school board member, Mr., or the meeting on business of Mr. Leiter. But somebody told me that those windows are only like 20 years old, and that they were put in. I'm wondering how important, and I know that they were part of the RED Plan, and they were postponed, depending on what other priorities might come up. But who determined that they were a priority if, in fact, they were replaced 20-some years ago? And what are we going to get out of it, if that's the case, by replacing them?
Mr. Leiter?
Member Welty, members of the board, I can't give you an exact date on when they were replaced. I probably could research and determine that. It was my understanding that they were replaced sometime in the 80s. And they have been significantly underperforming for lots of reasons. The integral shades in them were causing problems, weren't operating, would stay closed. The mechanism that allowed them to be opened was failing, to the point where they basically were non-operable. From an energy standpoint, they were considered poor. The finishes on the interior were challenged, and because of some of the energy considerations, there was a lot of moisture that would develop on the inside. So I think there was just a number of factors that led us to conclude that those, of the existing windows that weren't replaced as part of our long-range facilities plan, they were in the worst condition. And I repeatedly received requests from the school to do something about it over the years.
Thank you for the clarification. Member Welty?
If I could, thank you, Chair Harla. From a teacher's standpoint, I suppose in a hot day, if you couldn't open a window, that would be a problem, although my understanding, or what I thought I understood, was that for the integrity of the entire heating and cooling of a building, it's discouraged to open windows. What were the, you talked about the internal shades not working. I can imagine a lot of sun coming in if you couldn't close the shades and it heating up. From the standpoint of the teachers in those classrooms, what were the worst disadvantages to these 1980s windows? How did it affect them?
Well, I can't really comment on individual teachers. I can only provide some anecdotal response based on what I received. And I just described them from my background, working with the school. The shades, similar to this building, were in between some glass that could be removed, but the mechanism to turn them, if you're familiar with like a Venetian blind, that they rotate up and down. There was a real challenging mechanism built into them, and it didn't work consistently, in some cases not at all. And I think that was the biggest frustration. We did remove them from the windows as part of our long-range plan, knowing that it was temporary. And we have replaced them with some roller shades to provide the teachers the effect they needed for darkening the rooms.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, the energy efficiency was a significant consideration. The new windows will be much more energy efficient, tight, they won't leak, we won't have snowdrifts in the window sills.
Thank you. The next item on the list is the lease for Northwoods Children's Services, Member Oswald.
This will be quick, just really quick. I just noticed that on the schedule, with the checklist of utilities and other services that they're, and the repair and maintenance schedule, the committee version we got listed the second point as, both the first and the second point being listed as Merrick Creek Academy, but in our packet, the second point was changed to Chester Creek Academy. And I just wanted to know which ones which. It would be on page 69 of the board packet that us board members have.
Mr. Hanson?
Yeah, both, this schedule supports both contracts that we have with Northwoods Children's, one for the Merrick Creek facility, which you're considering tonight, and the other one for a Chester Creek Academy, which is written on a separate lease document. But the schedule that's attached to each lease supports both of those documents. So in this case, it would only apply to the, those items labeled Merrick Creek.
And so, in our committee packets, when they both were listed as the same, that was just a typo? Because I have the committee packet here that shows Merrick Creek is on both Point 1 and 2.
I would say that was just a typo, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next question, expenditure contracts. Alana, our Member Oswald.
Let me get there. I just have a question, as I'm a little bit confused about the Myers Wilkins and Lincoln Park Community School collaborative agreements that we're having, in that this memorandum of understanding is assigning staffer from the schools to be listed as having the responsibilities in the memorandum, and I was curious as to who that person is?
Mr. Gronsa?
For the Lincoln Collaborative, that is a district employee, her name is Rachel Tappa.
I'm more referring to on page 99, where it says, "Refer or provide a DPS staffer as a liaison on contact for the project and to participate in the family school and collaborative school," whatever. It's in Section 3, the third dot. Is that, is that still the same person that you're talking about, or is that somebody in administration?
No, that's, when the Minnesota legislature legislators provided funds for community schools projects, it was to pay for someone who would serve in this role. And originally, it was going to be through the collaborative that we would contract for those services. And then, when the legislation came out, the funding was changed, that it had to be a district employee. And so a district employee is leading the work at Lincoln. We're currently working with these groups to develop new MOUs, new memorandums of understanding on how we'll function and how we share space and moving forward. So hopefully, it won't be too long, and we will be replacing this MOU.
I just have a follow-up question to that, in that, that brings me to this question of not completely understanding how Myers Wilkins functions as a community collaborative school. And the head of that is a nonprofit that is associated with the school, whereas Lincoln Park is heading this up themselves. What are the benefits to having a nonprofit run the collaborative part versus forcing Lincoln to do it by themselves and work with this nonprofit?
Kathy Bogan, who has served as kind of the grassroots leader of, well, what was the Grant Collaborative, and now the Myers Wilkins Collaborative, worked really closely with our legislators on developing this, and, you know, had a big part in that. And the vision all along was that it was going to be nonprofit organization that was driving it. And it wasn't until the legislation came out that we realized it had to be an employee that was running this. I think in the future, it could possibly change to be a nonprofit, a group that could lead this right now, the way the statute is written, it needs to be an employee. They sometimes have some more flexibility in how they operate when they're a nonprofit versus an employee. I think it also has a different kind of stability when it's community-driven and community-funded rather than district-funded, because it's less apt to be affected by, you know, legislative action or funding. But there are also some pros to having it be a district employee as well, as far as they have access to benefits and pay scales that are associated with the district. So there's pros and cons both ways, and we'll continue to work with them collaboratively to provide those services and hopefully expand this to Denfeld or to other schools. And we're excited to see it grow, and we'll hopefully be involved in changes to that in the future. And maybe we'll learn from having one be district employee, one collaborative employee. Maybe we'll learn some lessons along the way and be able to share that with legislators and talk about those pros and cons.
Thank you. Member Lefler Kemp?
I was just going to make a suggestion. I know we've had Kathy, well, Kathy Bogan and other staff from Myers Wilkins come and just talk about the community school collaboratives, and it might be good, again, with our new members, to have that broader discussion, again, about the legislation and the thinking behind it, the successes, the challenges. So just a comment.
Thank you. Last, Member Oswald, 6F with the broadcasting of meetings.
Member Kirby's summation of this to include a six-month trial is, the first I heard of it was in an email exchange today with our chair, and I had not been aware of that discussion prior to that. I don't recall it. I don't know if I was zoning out at the meeting, but I had no idea that that was even an option. And so that kind of took me by surprise. I think the reasonable sum of $1,800 to broadcast all of our committee meetings, our HR business and education committee meetings, using college students to help man our cameras, as they do for our board meetings now, is a very successful and wise use of taxpayer money to increase our transparency and allow people in the community to access the record of our discussions and be a great resource for us to go back to. I would like to go back to the meeting right now and see if six months was ever talked about, because I don't really remember that. So I would highly encourage that we continue this, and I'd really like to make a motion that we vote on accepting this, even on a trial basis. And I'd like to make a motion that we start broadcasting our committee meetings as soon as possible for the 2016-17 school year, and then reevaluate over that nine months, because I think it's important to have a definite timeline that fits into intern schedules being there in college, and it would be hard to cut off their employment numbers and jobs, given that time constraint.
Second. It's been moved by, a motion has been made by Member Oswald, a second with Member Welty, to, sorry, I want to sum up the long explanation, to have the board meetings presented, or have them, sorry, the nine o'clock hour is hitting, to have them broadcast and then look at it again in nine months. So, Ms. Welty, a second. If Members are all right, I'll provide some clarification for why I had said six months. Just making sure that if we're going to be making an investment in something and adding it through, that it's good to, always good measure to just do a litmus test partway through. It was not a, it was nothing to say, we're not going to do this anymore. It's more of, let's see how it's going, let's have the discussion about this, is this working, et cetera. So more of, more of that, I think, it sounds like you're assuming that, kind of, the negative side of it, it's more of like, let's just keep the discussion going for it. So, in the way that you had presented that. So Superintendent Gronsa?
Just looking for some clarity on process. Would that be live broadcast, posted on YouTube, or both?
A question back, and this is where I didn't see the piece. How much does it cost for us to present, to put our things on to public access TV? Was that presented at the committee meeting? Superintendent?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Hanson.
Mr. Hanson?
I'm not sure I have an answer to that question. I just want to, as you deliberate on this motion... I just wanna, as you deliberate on this motion, I just want to make sure you understand what our intention was administratively on this item. It was our intention, based on the discussion from this past committee meeting, to bring this back to you in August as an action item with a recommendation. We talked about floor layout, we talked about whether any equipment was, additional equipment was needed. I think we end up with a no on that, but we also talked about the broadcasting options, and I don't have answers on that right now. So, again, just information as you consider your motion, that it would be our intention to come back to you with an action item in August.
Thank you. Member Lefler Kemp?
Yes, that is, what I wanted clarification on is, are we ready to do a motion? Do we actually need a motion at this point? And it feels like, I mean, it was an informational item on our committee meeting, we got some information, we, we didn't have all of the, there were a lot of discussion and no kind of conclusions. So I feel it's a little premature to be voting on a motion right now, and I would welcome administration coming back with a recommendation that has kind of more specific on how this could work. I don't see a problem with supporting it by any means, but I would welcome more information and the, the cost behind it.
Member Oswald?
I'd just like to respond that, that my motion was to record this in whatever fashion eighteen hundred dollars, the eighteen hundred dollar estimate was going to give us, and for the starting of the school year, and that would more than accommodate an August resolution to clarify the logistics of such a thing. And so I think our, my motion is pertinent to ensure that we start in September.
Member Welty?
Uh, 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 Member, Member Oswald, I, I thought I heard two slightly different things. At first, I thought I heard you said that, that you would be satisfied with the administration bringing us a proposal in August, and then I think I heard you say that you thought the motion that you, and I have seconded, would be a good way to begin this process in September, which of course is not specified in the motion. I was going to suggest before that, that I would be happy to withdraw my second, I don't want to dis, dismay you about that, if you were satisfied that the administration might bring us a, a, a proposal for us to act on in August. And I was going to suggest that if, if their proposal was one that began in September, I would be happy with that, but I'm going to leave it to you as to whether we pursue a vote on, on this motion right now.
Member Oswald?
The motion that I proposed was for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year. So I, in my head, that was, that was September. So I, I think that's where I've, I guess I needed to clarify a little bit more. If you want to withdraw, I'm not going to be offended, but I, I do think that a motion of this sort will guarantee our commitment to making that happen, and, and people will know to expect that they can look up records of our meetings.
You know, a point of, I just asked a question of Member Oswald. It's been clear from the superintendents and, Mr. Hand, Hanson, that they'd be putting together a presentation that would go into effect in September, and then just a comment. I feel personally uncomfortable voting on something that I don't know all the details on moving forward. I know that, that's been a comment of our board in general, that people haven't, oftentimes like to just do blanket resolutions. So I don't know if I'd actually be able to support this, because I, I know it'll be coming up next month, can work to assure that and make sure that it begins in September. So, as had, I had emailed with you earlier today. So, Member Welty?
Yes, Chair Harla, thank you for recognizing me. Uh, Member, Member Oswald, I would think that we would signal the, telegraph the wrong, 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 uh, wrong message if by chance, people who felt that we should postpone this voted against this resolution, and it does seem to me that Chair Harla is correct. The administration is thinking in terms of September with the details we talked about, where we would all be placed, and at what level. So I, I apologize, but I'm going to withdraw my second, and I'm just going to make this observation, that if the administration lets me down, and, and you don't get your way, I will be embarrassed for myself having withdrawn my second. So please, guys, don't leave me down. I don't want, Member Oswald to, to be, have a grudge against me for the rest of the, the school year.
Thank you. So as a point of order, there's been a motion, the second has been withdrawn. Member Oswald, oh, it has been seconded by Member Johnston, so, Member Oswald. Good job, Jackie. Please note your, our appreciation in the minutes.
Sorry. Just know that. Actually, I am going to withdraw my motion.
Okay.
With, with the hope and intent, because this is news to me from Mr. Hanson, that he was bringing this forward in, in August, and I did not know that. And I put full faith in Mr. Hanson for creating this resolution, and that we find an amicable solution to start broadcasting in September. And with that, I am done.
Thank you. So the motion has been rescinded, therefore, the second, Member Johnston?
I was going to second it, you can't really withdraw seconds for technicality, but I was gonna make a motion to table it after that, so, but anyway, it's fine.
Thank you. All right, we've made it through that piece. Look forward to hearing that this month. Thank you for the discussion, board members. That brings us to the end of the Business Committee agenda. It has been moved and seconded, seeing no other lights. All those in favor of the Business Committee report, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes six to one, and we have a special resolution, sorry, five, six, zero, excuse me. Member Oswald, I've, I've asked Member Oswald to read the resolution, the special resolution.
Resolution SP dash seven dash one six dash three three eight six. Board member attendance at SMB, MSBA Summer Seminar. Resolve that Independent School District seven oh nine, St. Louis County, Minnesota, pay costs incurred as per district policy for school board members to attend the Minnesota School Board Association's two thousand sixteen Summer Seminar in Minneapolis, Minnesota on August seventh through the ninth, two thousand sixteen. I move resolution SP dash seven dash sixteen dash three three eight six.
Moved by Member Oswald, seconded by Member Welty. Any discussion? Member Lefler Kemp?
I just wanted to add that Member Oswald and myself will be attending this. I appreciate the board supporting us attending. I try and go to as many of the NSBA conferences as I can, and this one is on framing the equity question, conversation, and a racial equity approach to critical teacher shortages. So I am sure we will bring lots of good information back that we will pass on with the rest of the board, and thank you again for supporting us going.
Thank you. All those in favor of the special resolution?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six, zero, seeing no further lights, our meeting is, oh, Member Johnston, please don't rap on your desk.
Wanted to, had to get your attention, thank you for acknowledging me. The other one is questions and others, and I do have to ask this, because I've been getting calls all day today on this lawsuit. I don't have a clue what it is, other than what I read in the paper. And since I've been getting calls from people from the media, from other people asking me about what's going on, I feel it's certainly appropriate that we, as a school board, should at least be told something about it. Apparently, this was, I understand it was filed last week. I understand, at least according to the newspaper, that the school board members are part of the defendants, and since that is the case, and since our school is, I'd like to know certainly, well, first of all, why I wasn't informed, we weren't informed, and secondly, I'd like to, what is going on?
Superintendent?
We have not received any papers or formal notification of this lawsuit. As board members, you would most likely be notified before us, and so if you hear anything, please share it with us, and then we will share information as we have it.
Was told that there was, by the newspaper.
We, we don't have, I mean, we haven't received anything.
I mean, that's all on the web, every time everything is filed in federal court, it's on the web. I didn't look, but I'm assuming that it's there, or did the Minneapolis paper get it completely wrong?
Like I said, as soon as we know more, we'll share it with the board.
Member Oswald?
I just have a quick question regarding our wonderful tennis court facilities at Laura MacArthur School. I've had many people compliment our district for these great opportunities to use these courts. However, these courts have been locked at non-business hours, and I was just curious as to what the plan is for community use for this facility, and if there are plans to figure out how to expand the hours so more of our West Duluth neighbors can take advantage of playing tennis during the weekends and evenings.
Member Oswald, you ask a good question. I emailed that in a while ago, and understood that we can, people can contact Community Ed to get a key for, and make plans, community education.
No one communicated that with me, so that's good to know.
I know that there were, I saw a number of emails that came through, so my guess is that someone must have.
I got nothing. So, yeah, I, I don't doubt it happened. I'm just saying, I put in a request to this, and I had not received any answer to my email either, so.
Thank you.
It's Community Ed. All right, thank you very much.
Member Welty?
Yeah, to follow up on that, is, is there somebody on the premises that is in Community Ed, so that somebody could go and request a, a key? It sounds to me like the, you couldn't just have a pickup game there. If you, you wanted to, you would have to schedule it with Community Education during the business hours, and as somebody who used to play a little bit of tennis, gosh, that is an inconvenient way to get a hold of a tennis court when you're in the mood to, to bang a ball around.
Well, it is, and looking at our shared use agreements in the future would be a good thing to do, so that we can share some liability with the city, potentially. Mr. Leiter?
Chair Harla, members of the board, I can share with you some of the, the status and history regarding the tennis courts. We currently have provided direction to our Laura MacArthur building staff, that they are opening the tennis courts when they arrive on site during the, the work week, which in the summertime, they're there with programs starting at about six thirty, and they're there until about six PM at night. So those are the hours that we currently have the tennis courts open. The reference to Community Ed Department is through Lincoln Park, the Community Ed Director, our, our staff at Lincoln Park, for special permits. They can be open on weekends and evenings, and somebody goes to the facilities and opens them with a key. That said, I, I think this is really a temporary solution, because our, our long-term goal is working with the city of Duluth, where we've been having conversations with them in our Joint Powers Committee, and there is a desire, and I think the city is pursuing it, to enter into a, a new partnership or relationship with Duluth Friends of Tennis, or an equivalent organization that is looking to manage for both the school district and the city, their tennis facilities, providing equivalent programming, both east and west, where it primarily has been at the Longview Facility, and to some extent, at the Wheeler Facility in the past. Our, our hope is that with that agreement with the city, Member Harla mentioned the liability, that there, there will be some shared responsibility also for protecting the facilities, making sure that it is secured, and monitoring it for any damage or vandalism, and determining what is appropriate hours for the, the community to use them. For example, not having them open all night long, after dark, where there's potential for vandalism, I think, regardless where they are. There's a valuable asset that's important to our high school. I think our high school teams are really looking forward to having those facilities, and it would be a shame if, if they're somehow damaged or abused. So I think we want to, we want to make them available to the community, but we also want to protect the community's asset to the extent that's reasonable. I hope that answers the question about the status right now. I can't tell you when we're going to have the agreements or understand the terms better with the city and how we might make them more available.
Thank you. Member Johnston?
Yeah, as, as the Park and Rec Board liaisons, I've shared with the superintendent and the board, you know, a couple months ago, there was questions on that, I've been getting calls myself, too, about that, so thank you for explaining that. Just, so it is something, and I don't know if, if the Park and Rec has talked to you yet, but I, I told them, hey, I can't, I can't speak for the district, of course, because I don't know any of those things, but there did, was an interest, and maybe they'll be coming back and asking for that, and then I'd ask Mr. Leiter, if he's still here, to come and address the, the Park and Rec Board on those. Just, just a cautionary note, though, you did mention that we may want to have a, another community group or whatnot, kind of helping out. There's pros and cons on that, and I've heard from some people, once a community organization, whatever it may be, kind of a formal organization, gets that, I'll say, contract, sometimes that turns some other people off, and they, they emphasize that facility for their particular group rather than for the public at large. So just a cautionary note, that when something like that happens, we have to make sure that we still have these facilities open to the public and not just a special group, and I am certainly in support of those things, as long as we have, the public still has access through that.
Thank you.
Long-term issue, but I have heard that from several people, too, about other facilities we have. So just be careful.
Member Lefler Kemp?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry to keep this meeting going long, but it just kind of brought up that we often, as school board members, get questions, whether it's from staff or from community members, on a number of things that often, if, if we ask the right director or the right staff person, we all find out some of the rationale behind decisions. And so I just continue to encourage us, as we get a variety of questions, that we either send an email or go through our chair to make sure we're getting the explanation without kind of jumping to conclusions on, on, on why things, decisions are made. So I appreciate you going over that, and it just reminded me of how often we get questions, and we should go to the right staff person, they usually have the answers. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and that concludes our July meeting. Have a nice night.